What them was?
Really?
Yes, I was. My favorite teacher of all time.
Well Sergeant Farmer, I can see that you, finally somebody picked you up from the beach.
Yes, sir.
I was worried, I was concerned that they left you there.
Thank you, sir. We've tried to leave him there several times ago.
I know, and usually his wife's the one that drops him off.
Wow.
Love crowd, isn't it?
There was a lone picture of Sergeant Farmer with nobody around on this desolate beach. He's like, "They just left me here." And nobody came to pick you up.
Eventually.
Did you have a cellphone with you, honey?
No, single.
Alright, SRO curriculum update.
Hey, we'd like to come in, as for those, I guess everybody's familiar with us, I'm Ron Frank and this is Scott Farmer, we supervise the school resource officers. I supervise the east side of the county, Scott supervises the west. What we wanted to do was come in today and just kind of give an overview of some of the things we're doing in the classroom, some of our curriculum. Understand that besides a standardized curriculum, we do go into any classes that they want us to come in and talk about any number of topics, but we just wanted to touch on what we're doing at all the different grade levels. What we wanted to do today, because bullying's kind of a pretty big issue out there, we just wanted to talk about specifically that component of our curriculum through the grade level, so you got to get an idea of what we're doing.
Great.
So what we're going to do is we'll start off, what we do in first grade, we do a called Junior Focus. Focus is kind of our flagship program, we'll get to the main program in a minute, but what we determined was, in first grade, you know, the kids are just new coming into school, they've gotten through kindergarten, and we wanted to make this our first opportunity to have them meet our SROs in a formal setting. And so what we do is, it's kind of like an officer-friendly sort of speech where they bring them into the, usually the media center, and they sit them down and have just a friendly talk and conversation, and I'll let Scott kind of explain the lesson.
Visiting the elementary schools for the first time, we wanted to come up with something that was structured based on what children wanted to hear, what parents wanted to hear, what the teachers wanted to hear, and developed these lessons several years ago. And one of the number one requests by the teachers was respecting each other, and in that particular lesson, and when I asked them to expound on that, they said, "We've got a lot of pushing, shoving, hitting, a lot of rowdy behavior," and, you know, I plugged in a section of that which talks about keeping the environment safe, and having an area free from bullying and harassment, trying not to distract others, and kind of defining it on their level as to what it is and what we expect from them, based on what teachers wanted.
And just back real quick, just some of the other things we discussed, like the front door, we were finding is, young children out there didn't know if they were home by themselves and someone knocked on the door, they'd open the door and say, "Mommy and daddy aren't here." So, you know, we were teaching them a lot of things that parents weren't giving them information about as to what they needed to know. So that's kind of where we came up with that. Cyber safety is one of the newest additions to that, we started that about three years ago. Three years ago, we started asking third graders, "Do you have email?" And when they all started raising their hands, and then we started asking first graders, and how much involvement they have on the computers. So we actually added the cyber safety component several years ago.
Even with the video games handheld, able to interact with other students and grownups through simple little handheld games, we cover that.
By the way, the phone calls, that sounds like a small thing, but I couldn't get over when I asked my daughter, "Well, of course you've got a dial-up phone," and it was Sergeant Farmer that talked her, "Oh, and by the way, in a lot of phones now, you have to click 'talk' afterwards, or 'send,' because they're either cellphones or they're digital-type phones." You know, we wouldn't have, I don't know that we would have thought about that, but that's a huge difference between getting a hold of 911 and not, so those are those pieces. Thank you.
Next, we move into third grade. This is the only curriculum that we didn't develop ourselves, and quite honestly, the reason we're using it, there really isn't anything better out there. It was developed by a man named Kenneth Wooten, and what he was is a, he was working on his PhD, did his thesis, what he wanted to do was find out why child molesters, how they found out, how they tracked their victims down, you know, how they determined which child they were going to go after, and how they lured their victim, hence the name Child Wars. And what it consists of is, he came up with about 24 ideas that are different models that these molesters were using to attract their victims. And so what we've done is, it's been compiled into about an eight lesson series that the SROs get in in third grade and discuss.
We have to be very careful how we deliver the information, is not to scare the children and stick to the curriculum that's in the instructor's manual. And one of the lessons that we touch on is the law of prejudice and violence, which includes situations where children of parents belong to hate groups, we don't get into that much detail, this is the parent guide, the slide that you're looking at to, so the parents can reinforce it at home. For example, when possibly someone would encourage a third grader to target a set individual because of race or because of some type of physical challenge that they have. And that also has a bullying component in it, where we talk about what to do if somebody is being mean or cruel, or victimizing a fellow third grader.
And with this, what you're looking at is the booklet that we send home with the parents, so the parents can actually help reinforce this at home. And as it says, it gives the parents steps to do and how to talk to their kids about bullying. Next, we go to our flagship program, filtering our crime unit of students, I think everyone knows Focus. Years ago, we did DARE, and what we realized is, DARE was not meeting the needs of students in Citrus County. We had to teach it to state and federal standards, or national standards, and what was happening is, we were not doing that, so we were failing as DARE instructors because we weren't keeping with their standardized curriculum. So what we wanted to do is come up with something that if it was affecting our students, we could add it into our program. Kids in Old Hummus Sassa don't have the same problems as kids out in Compton, California. So as we were talking about specific issues to us, as they were coming in and grading us, we were failing because we weren't teaching the correct way they wanted us to. So we created this back in 2000, and it's been a great program for us. Here's the lessons that we cover in Focus.
Basically, the foundation of DARE came from life skills training, that's proven effective, goes back 25, 35 years. And we kept some of the items from DARE that we liked, and we created some new ideas. And this year, we just got finished, Deputy Farnum was instrumental in helping us revamp the interactive drug identification pages that are going to be coming out in our new Focus book, so as we're going through the harmful effects of the new synthetics, K2 and those type of things, the students can write things down as they get the information, and some new graphics and things in there. And then if you get down to Lesson 8, we've always covered bullying. And my main goal with the, giving the information to fifth graders about the bullying is a big, big push for not being a bystander, you know, and we have a PowerPoint interactive presentation that we use for that.
One of the other things with Focus is, we update this every year, and so it gives us a chance that if we're running into situations in the school that we see at other levels, we can go back and implement it in the next school year. A good example of that is prescription pills. Probably about 2002, our high school SROs started seeing a rise in prescription drug arrests. So we implemented something in Focus back then, and it wasn't until about 2006, 2007 that you really started seeing prescription pill problems on a national basis. So we implemented that back then, same thing with the synthetic drugs. As soon as we heard about it and started hitting our high schools, we started discussing it in Focus, and we started discussing it in our other programs. That's one good thing with the programs we do, when we start seeing things, we can implement them immediately.
And you want to know something? We have seen a significant decrease in the zero tolerance rates, or things we deal with prescription pills. I can say it in the last year, I don't even remember. We guys do a whole flur, a couple of years, you're right.
Well, what I found when I was at the high school, what we were running into is, you catch a kid with hydrocodone, some sort of controlled substance, and when you explain to them, you possessing that, if it's not meant for you, is just like, you know, having cocaine. They didn't realize that. So now that's one of the things we're really pushing. We are having it in the community level with the adults, prescription pills is a huge problem, but I think at the school level, we're doing a really good job of explaining and awareness. Next, we go to seventh grade, which we do Know the Law. This we've done in conjunction with the Partners for a Substance Free Citrus. It's a grant that we've developed with them, where they've created a booklet. If you go to, in a second, you'll see some of the slides from there, but what we do is basically a general overview, we talk about crimes against persons, property crimes, basically things that affect middle school kids. And what we've done with this is, back in the old days, prior to 1994, if a juvenile was arrested, that record got sealed, and it went away and nobody ever knew about it. It doesn't work that way anymore. Now, if a juvenile is arrested, that arrest can follow them through FDLE. There's ways that they can get it expunged, but it's not magically off their record. So what we wanted to do now is to convince them, you know, if you go into a shed and make a fort on some neighbor's property, or do an abandoned mobile home, which today with the way the economy is and all the abandoned houses out there, you go in and you make a fort in some house, you're trespassing, you're committing crimes. If you light a fire in there, you've committed arson. So what we want to do is talk to these kids and explain to them, some of the things they can do as kids can be considered criminal and can follow them down the road. You know, as an example, today, if a juvenile is arrested as pro felony, there's nothing that says their name can't be on the front page of the Chronicle. The Chronicle chooses not to do that, but it can be public information, and they can be out there.
And then under the Crimes Against Persons section in the Know the Law book, we have a bullying component that's also in there, and Deputy Cook is adding some statutory items to that book when it goes to reprint, so we actually can reference certain laws. Of course, bullying itself, depending on what type of bullying it is, might not be a criminal offense, we kind of break it down a little bit, and as you see on the bottom, it says cyberbullying, which all of our bullying lessons contain an electronic section, or a cyberbullying section.
And what we're doing in the classroom with this is, we try to get the kids to sort of teach each other. We lead the conversation with them, but we'll start picking out components of this and have the kids talk to each other about it, and try to get them to learn from one another with their, you know, with the different things that they've seen. And it seems to work. What we're changing in this this year is, we noticed at the different schools, that it was being taught just a little bit differently at each school, so now what we're going to do is, we're going to make it standardized across the board, so that each of the middle schools, it's being taught the same. Next, we get into high school, and what we teach is what we call Choices. It's really not an acronym for anything, it's just Choices. And it's four lessons, and we know once we get into high school with FCAT, or with testing, and with standardized testing, and everything else going on that they get involved with, we wanted to keep this condensed. We didn't want to do a protracted 10-week thing, we just wanted to get in there and work with them about the different issues that affect them as young adults. And what we've done with this program is, we've made it really interactive, we use different types of social media, we use different types of videos, podcasts, things like that, and it's really interactive. What I'm going to do is, kind of give you an idea of what we do, I'm going to show you two videos pertaining to what we kind of do with some of the bullying things.
Okay, Lindsay, you're up.
Today I'm going to talk about Patty. Patty's best characteristics, she's stupid, stupid and ugly. Every thing she does is ugly. Watch her eat, watch her stuff her face. Look at her, greasy hair, dirty fingernails, it makes me want to vomit. Her dad doesn't work, they have no money. That's why she wears that nasty pink sweater. Everyone hates her, even the teachers, and they're supposed to like everyone. Get a lift, Patty. Thank you.
Yeah, I think in a nutshell, that sends home the message. You know, there's not much we can back that up with, I mean, you feel for that girl. And we want people, the kids, to realize that things that they're saying online, they're not saying in person, you know. You'll ask them that, you'll see a text that they send to somebody and say, "Would you say that to their face?" Well, no, I wouldn't. So that's one of the reasons we showed that video. And then what we do is, we'll back it up with something, current event, and here's the next video.
Your details. The arrest of those two girls charged with using Facebook to taunt and bully their 12-year-old schoolmate until she killed herself. Police are now looking into charging their parents too. NBC's Matt Coven has the latest on the case from Bartow, Florida. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, George. Those girls, just 14 and 12 years old. Now, that 14-year-old is waking up in this mosquito-infested jail this morning, she'll be here for another nine days until she's arraigned, locked up by a sheriff who now says he's investigating her parents. This morning, a community is reeling from the failure to prevent the suicide of what police say was a bullied 12-year-old group.
And then that's just gives you the beginning point of the video, but then it goes into the specifics of the case and things like that, but what we've done is, we started out with a message and we've reiterated it with real world events.
And then we get into the, you know, general cyber safety, cyber stalking and bullying, which now is being, some young people are being prosecuted, and you get to ball rolling on some other things that probably will happen in the future. And then, of course, my favorite part is the message out there to the parents that ultimately they'll be held accountable if they're not supervising to some degree what their children are doing with these electronic devices. And so, you know, the goal there is that they might go home and say, "Wow, you know, we learned that you can get in trouble too if we make a mistake, so we don't want to get involved in that type of thing," and that's also covered in Choices.
So that covers our standard curriculum through the grade levels, and like I said, at any time we get asked to teach on any topic, we'll go in and speak to classrooms about just about anything they want us to talk about, so that's kind of what we've got going in a nutshell, so does anybody have any questions?
I just like the fact that you give the high school the synopsis of Choices, because their attitude, what they choose to do each day makes a big difference, and they do have the choice. Thank you. Thank you.
And I also appreciate your involvement in Team Driver's Challenge, because you know how successful that is.
Absolutely. We didn't even bring that up, and we should have. I get calls on a regular basis from other agencies around the state asking how we do it. So, well, we work with the school board, and we've got to where they've got a, basically a day off from school as a field trip to go to Team Driver, and they say, "How in the world did you do that?" So we've got a great school district.
Because some district superintendents don't talk this year.
Yeah.
Online, that's what happens.
And it's amazing, across the state and across the nation, when we discuss things that our agency does with the school district, they don't understand how we make it work. And it's, we've always had a great working relationship with you all, and we appreciate the opportunity to be in the schools and do it.
The Washington DC trip, thank you. That's another huge, the Safety Patrol. Are either of you guys going this year?
Of course.
We can get in trouble again, Scott. Oh, that's right, oops, sorry.
That's right.
Genevieve comes this year. Yeah, oh, yes. That's weird, you know?
You'll want to ride with them.
I, well, last time Scott and I and Joe, X-time, we're all sitting group.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
We make them ride in the back.
Somebody needs to supervise that.
You know, question, Mr. Mullen, do you think maybe it's possible that with all the iPads that we have implemented, that maybe there's a way we could talk to Dr. Gettis to get Crime Stoppers put onto that, because that would be a great, or maybe you have some...
That's already been done. On all the iPads we've had, and we've actually got a campus Crime Stopper program that's geared towards our school-age children, that they can report actual incidents that are happening on campus, and it doesn't have to be criminal, so they can report bullying on campus, and it is handled the same exact way it is handled through a regular Crime Stopper tip.
And then we make sure every tip is followed up on at the school.
Yeah.
Good idea, Mr. Kennedy.
It has been.
Clearly.
We've installed it on all the iPads, so we've already done some training with it. We're getting ready to roll out a PSA across the district for all the middle schools and high schools dealing. We went to each of the high schools, we used some of our explorers, and we wanted to go to each school, so that kids from Crystal River would recognize their school, kids from La Canto would recognize their school, and Citrus would recognize their school, and it's a PSA about using Crime Stoppers.
Great.
Awesome.
That's all we got? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to State of the District and Human Resources, since somebody has some place to be at 1:00.
Before we do that, it's my understanding I was going to be given an opportunity to follow up with the SROs to give you...
Oh, excuse me.
We're doing at the services and at the district level...
You weren't wearing anything green, and you didn't have a gun, so I didn't know.
Well, you know, I thought about that, but I didn't want to stir all you up. Is this a good time for me to follow up on that?
How long?
Can you let us start over first? Because aren't you used to here with clinic procedures and things?
Well, this, I can do whatever, so tell you the story.
Okay, I know that...
Yas Wang has to...
Yas Wang has to, has to go. Yas Wang. Sorry, sorry, Ms. Sagareta.
I will go first, and then I'll let Mr. Bishop go. Thank you very much for doing this. We have an evaluation meeting at 1:00 today, so this is wonderful. Okay, if you will skip through, I will begin with the evaluation system update, and then Mr. Bishop will go back through the State of the District for Human Resources. Good afternoon, and again, thank you for letting me go at this time. Okay, I just want to review the updates and changes that we've made to the evaluation system over the last two years. I just want to remind you on my first slide, that the statute requires us to have two components of the evaluation system. The district portion, which is comprised of 50% of the evaluation system, that is based on FEEDs, the Florida Educator Accomplished Practices. The other 50% is based on student growth, student achievement, and we receive this 50% from VAM, which is given to us by the state or by district data. And that comprises our evaluation system. There were two components that were not completed until last year, and they are implemented, being implemented this year. That is the additional metric and the milestone career event, and I'm going to explain more about the additional metric and what we've chosen to use, and I'm going to explain more about the milestone career event in the next few slides, but now our evaluation system is complete based on the requirements from the state. The other major change that we made was to the wording of highly effective. Two years ago, in the 11, 12 school year, the wording stated models, shares and models with other teachers. Well, the evaluation committee brought back concerns, they wanted to know how much share model do we have to do? It was all about quantity, and their concern was with quantity. How many times do I have to present to the staff? How many times do I have to present to my teammates? What does this represent? So we did change the wording, the wording now matches the highly effective definition for administrators as well, and we did try to closely model the administrative evaluation system and the instructional evaluation system. So as you can see, our new description that we used last year and continue to implement this year is constitute models of proficiency and exceed effective levels. And what that means is, we want to get across to our instructional personnel that it's about the quality that you use in the classroom when you implement those highly effective strategies versus the quantity, and we will continue to send that message out to our instructional personnel. It's about not just presenting to the staff, but if you're using highly effective strategies that you are inviting those other teachers from other schools, from your school, to come in and see what you're doing in the classroom. You don't have to do a presentation to share with your second or third grade team the effective strategy you are using in the classroom. And again, we want to reiterate, it's about quality, the quality of the work you're doing in the classroom versus the quantity. There are three definitions that I want to share, and again, this goes back to the work that we focused on last year and the things that we have put into place this year. The first is a milestone career event, and the state said, "You have to have a milestone career event, you have to decide what that is, and it has to be significant, a significant change." So we decided, the evaluation committee decided, that that milestone career event would be anyone moving from an instructional position to an administrative position. This does not include, because I've had several questions, and I'm going to reiterate that to our evaluation team today, it does not mean ESE specialist or TOSSs, it is that administrative position such as a coordinator, such as an assistant principal, that would be a milestone career event. Comes with significant increase in salary and a significant change in your position. So that's what we determined. So what that means is, anyone that is going to elect to apply for those positions this year will have to complete an additional metric, and we decided that that additional metric would be the deliberate practice plan. And the deliberate practice plan, administrators already have to do, starting this year, the deliberate practice plan, and all administrators are required, all instructional administrators are required to do the deliberate practice plan, as well as anyone seeking an administrative position, and we're going to go into more detail as we go through the presentation. The deliberate practice plan, we solidified the details and the processes in last year's meeting with the evaluation team. We met in May, and we determined everything, solidified those processes. We met with instructional personnel in September, on September 12th, we met with instructional personnel, and we spelled out in a presentation to them exactly the steps that they need to go through to complete, successfully complete that deliberate practice plan. We gave them examples of deliberate practice plans that our administration has shared that had already completed, we gave them non-examples and said, "Okay, take this apart." What, and using the rubric, and I'm going to talk more about the rubric, using the rubric, would this be a highly effective plan, would this be effective plan? Because in order to complete that additional metric, they must receive a rating on the deliberate practice plan of highly effective or effective, based on the implementation, and I'll talk more about that as we go through. And the next slide, I'll show you the professional development plan, we made a few changes to that, but in October, right now, on their professional development plan, they have to decide whether or not they're going to complete the deliberate practice plan. If they elect not to complete the deliberate practice plan, they will not be eligible to apply for administrative positions in our district for the, at the end of the school year. They can elect to do it again, and every year, they must complete the deliberate practice plan. So if they apply for positions, they do not receive a position in our district, next year, they must complete another, continue that process of completing those deliberate practice plans. They can also, if they decide now, and I'll show you on the professional development plan.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody applies for assistant principal from out of the county, would they have to do this when they got here?
Everyone in the state is required to do an additional metric, so we would look at that additional metric, and we are still going to talk about that with the executive staff and with the evaluation team this afternoon, but they are required to do an additional metric, so yes, we would definitely, we have had talks about that.
So out of county people would...
Would have to show us the additional metric.
And Susie, a question too, is if I'm an assistant principal and I'm applying for principalship, would I not have to do this, a deliberate practice?
Yes, you would, and they are required, all instructional administrators are required to do an additional, the additional metric, which is the deliberate practice plan. Again, we are still in discussion with out-of-state, out-of-county, and making sure, because if our staff's required to do it, our people in county, then we need to have a requirement, and look at that.
If I'm an assistant principal, hoping the principalship is going to open up, I would need to have started this process right now.
You are required, even if you decide you want to stay as assistant principal, you are still required as an administrator in our district to complete the deliberate practice plan.
Okay.
Yes. And they were trained in June, all of our administrators were trained in June, and then our new administrators that came on board were trained in August, in July and August, for completing the deliberate practice plan. So all of our instructional administration, both at the school site and our instructional administrators at the district site, are required to complete this plan every year.
What would be an example of deliberate practice?
I will go through that, and yes, I will show you the deliberate practice plan, and we'll talk about that.
I'm administrative, assistant principal did not complete the plan, there were assistant principals that didn't complete the plan this year.
It is a requirement that they must, yes, it's part of their evaluation, so they must, they are definitely required to complete.
So all current administration, district inside, schools?
School-based and instructional administration, yes, are required to complete.
All current administration, you're in an administrative position right now, they're still, they still need to comply with it?
Yes, and they are aware of that, we trained them in June, we continue that training for our new administration, it is a requirement for them to receive a successful evaluation. Instructional, yes, only instructional leaders.
Well, maternity leaders, I mean, if they didn't do it, what, how could they satisfy the requirement if so?
Well, if somebody's on leave, they may not even have a valuation for that year if they're not here.
That is correct.
This is now one of five, six areas that they're evaluating, all as an administrative. So if they didn't do it, I think it'd be an unsatisfactory, never?
Yes, that is correct, it is a component of their evaluation.
And the rubric would be enough that that would probably give them an unsatisfactory rank? Or it would certainly make it more challenging to get us...
Challenging, yeah.
And the state required, when they came to the district with the language of the requirement, did they specify that they wanted the metric within the administration? I know that you initially started out saying that state required milestone career events to be defined by the district and requiring free, so did the state continue their focus?
I believe, Lindsay, can you help me with this?
State required an additional metric for all administrators, and they want, they were requiring for administrators, I believe, deliberate practice. And then, as a committee, it was determined to apply that same deliberate practice for those who were seeking a milestone career event.
It involves me as far as verification, so are we referencing the state? Are we referencing the Department of Education, or referencing legislative action?
Statute. Statute is what was written in statute.
So this has been in statute, so legislators are the ones who are looking at.
Where it came from?
Correct.
And this goes back to 2011's change?
It was originally race to the top, then became Senate Bill 736.
That's what I was going to say.
Then after Senate Bill 736, there was also another tweak somewhere in legislation that also defined, further defined requirements for our teacher evaluation system and in our administrative evaluation system.
And they are, we feel like by putting the deliberate practice plan in place for the administrators and having that for the instructional personnel seeking that additional metric, that they are really able to assist and support those instructional personnel with completing the deliberate practice plan and the implementation, the design and implementation of the deliberate practice plan as well. So they're able to support one another.
Excuse me, board members, I'm not picking up you on the audio at all. Mrs. Powers, I'm staff, or I did not hear any of your comments.
All right, here's a copy of the professional development plan that we implemented this year. And there, as you'll see, we notated two changes that we made. The first is we are now asking administrators, when they meet with the instructional personnel, to share with them the data source that is being used on the evaluation. And that was a huge change that we decided that we felt strongly, the evaluation team, we felt strongly, we needed to notate. So they knew, instructional personnel knew exactly the data that was being used to evaluate them for that 50%. The other change we made is the sentence that they are seeking an administrative position and will be completing the deliberate practice plan. They must have indicated, yes, they cannot decide in March or April, well, I would like to apply for that assistant principal position, but I've not completed. They must indicate, yes. Now, there may be other circumstances, as Ms. Powers said, that they may say, okay, I have to take a leave of absence. If they don't complete it, that's okay. They can choose to opt out of deliberate practice. They would not be eligible for an administrative position, but it would not go against them. It would not hurt them on their evaluation if they opt out of that.
With that data source, how much flexibility do they have as far as being able to identify what data source they need?
The principal, we have that in the evaluation system that was submitted to the state and approved by the state. So we update that and they work together based on those data sources that are listed in the plan. And based on the students that they have, they discuss it and decide as the administrative staff and the teacher together. And they also, I know that several of our administrators have consulted research and accountability and Mr. Simon to make sure that they are using the correct data source.
So there's some consistency, uniformity?
Yes, yes. Okay, here is the deliberate practice plan. And let me share with you how they get to this point. Since the beginning of our new evaluation system, we've had a reflection tool in place. The teachers evaluate themselves on how they see themselves and those, on those educator accomplished practices. They go through and they mark themselves highly effective, effective, developing needs, improvement or unsatisfactory. And it is a reflection, it is, and we have stresses to administrators, it is not to be kept by administrators, it is just to be used as a discussion tool when they meet with their administrator to talk about their professional development plan. So they use that reflection tool. And then there is a sheet called a narrowing the focus worksheet. And this is just specific to those people completing a deliberate practice plan. And they complete the narrowing the focus tool. Basically, they fill in on the narrowing the focus tool how they rate themselves in the Florida educator accomplished practices. So they mark their ratings and then they look, okay, am I just effective in these areas? Or do I see myself as developing or needs improvement in these areas? And that's what they would put on the narrowing the focus worksheet. These are the areas that I feel I need to improve in. So they fill that out, they continue to narrow those, through a process, they continue to narrow those practices down, those standards down. They look at their data, both the previous year's data for their students and the current year's data for those students, because we know that changes. You don't get the same group of students every year. So they look at that data and then they decide what strategy or what area they want to focus on. They set a goal, they develop those strategies and list those strategies, and then they have the progress points. So they are sharing how they're going to implement that. You know, how, let's say Cornell notes, let's say, and this is middle and high school, so this is a stretch for me, but I know in middle and high school, they use Cornell notes. So the teacher wants to, has never, and it's something with deliberate practice, it's something else. They have to really stretch themselves and we stress that to them. If they're effective or highly effective in using Cornell notes in their classroom, then that's not something they need to work on. They need to choose something that they really want to stretch and reach and perfect in their classroom. So the teacher selects Cornell notes, they develop strategies on how they're going to implement Cornell notes in the classroom with their students. And then they monitor that. They monitor how often they use the Cornell notes, so they would document that, then lesson plans. Principals, administrators would document that on walkthroughs and the observations that they do. And then they would record data. They're going to choose the data they're going to use, student data that they're going to use to track. Is this, are Cornell notes making a difference by implementing them in my classroom? Is this making a difference in student achievement? And they're going to track that. And then they're going to share it on a monthly basis with their teammates. They can share with their teammates, they can share with administration and they're going to keep track of that. And we even suggested sharing that information with your students, tracking, okay, you've done a great job of implementing Cornell notes, I reviewed your Cornell notes, you're, you know, using this rubric, you're doing a fantastic job and look at how much you've improved in this area by utilizing them. So making the students accountable for their learning. And then they will receive that highly effective or effective rating based on implementation, not based on did the students make so much improvement? They have that goal, but it's just based on implementation. Did they effectively implement the deliberate practice plan? Here is the newest version of the summative assessment. And again, you will see the deliberate practice was added to the summative. It was added for administrators. The only difference with instructional personnel is that it is optional. You will see that does not apply, the NA, non-applicable. And then the ratings. So if they do a deliberate and complete a deliberate practice plan, they will receive a rating and it will be incorporated in their overall rating for the district portion of their evaluation.
Sounds to me though, it's very subjective.
The rating rubric is used for the implementation and we did go through that with the instructional personnel, but there is some subjectivity. But we did go through that and we said, okay, in order to be effective, these are the things you must have successfully done to implement your deliberate practice plan. In order to be highly effective, here's the rubric that we're going to use as administrators to show successful completion and to receive the rating of highly effective.
Is there a copy of the rubric in here?
No, I can send that to you.
Thank you.
Yes, I will send you a copy of the rating rubric.
If I'm an instructor, where do I get that?
It is online on our district intranet. And we have sent them to them and it is online. All of these forms are online at the district intranet and I will be happy to send them to you.
And is there a similar type model for this, for the typical summative assessment pieces for the others? I understand what the deliberate practice you're saying, but in my other evaluational ratings where I'm looking, if I need to provide documentation, if I need to provide examples of what HE or E should look like?
There is not, now there's, there on the back of the observation form, we have strategies that you would implement in your classroom, but there's not a specific rating rubric for the, as there is for the deliberate practice. Now I know at the end of the year, our staff completes a different type of reflection tool stating how they've been either effective or highly effective in meeting the five district standards. And so they would provide that information. And they use the reflection tool, the administration doesn't keep it or they just use it to help them remember the things that they've done to meet standard one, standard two, the things that they've done to effectively be a leader in the school so that those are used to document.
And that's where I think the question I have is, so in those, and I apologize, I forget what we call those, what are those sections called?
Our standards, our five standards?
The five standards?
Yes.
To say, okay, I, you know, have demonstrated, how do, I mean, how do I know then that what I'm doing is enough or that I need to do more throughout the year? How would I know that until I come to the end meeting that I would know that?
There is a mid-year review that the administration and the teacher meets together. So I would feel like those discussions would take place then. You know, what are you doing to demonstrate that you were highly effective or effective in the classroom? Do we have a specific list? No, we do not. We do not have a specific list to say if you do these things, you're highly effective. That's why we've changed the wording a little bit to constitute a model, to say constitute a model, and that they would have to actually share with their administration and based on walkthroughs and observations to demonstrate that they're doing highly effective or effective things in the classroom.
And those walkthrough conversations should be happening on a regular basis and then they have their observation and that feedback as well.
And the feedback's the key to those observations and walkthroughs. That's when they have those conversations early on as to whether or not they need to do something different to try and get higher upon the scale in terms of effective or how effective.
And is that that walkthrough tool too, where, you know, where there's, like sometimes we refer to them as love notes, but they may be notes that administrators leave positive and, or is that a cookie where you give a positive and maybe a reflection that they might look at and then you come in with that positive? Those are those?
We usually leave them with a reflection or a question. Correct. Okay, we also implemented last year the data review process. We had several instructional personnel that we're saying that had questions about the data or how was the data determined? This year, we had less last year, but this year we had 41 of our instructional personnel that requested a review of their data. And this is the process. An instruction, a teacher comes in, they say to the principal, they, at that time, August, September, they received the VAM data and they receive, let's say, a rating of effective and they say, I'm not really sure how this rating was determined, I have some questions. They indicate on their summative evaluation, I would like a review of my data. The administration then scans those to the human resources department and we have created a spreadsheet with the teacher's name, with the school that they work at, with the rating they received, and then the date we received it in our department. Research and accountability works very closely with us and we both have access to that spreadsheet. So we notify research and accountability that we've added people that have requested. They then set up meetings and meet with those instructional personnel to go over their data. If there's no change, we notify administration and then they notify the teacher. If there is a change to their rating, research and accountability contacts us, we contact administration and then we set up a meeting with the teacher to change that rating for the data portion.
And where would an error take place?
I can share with you, we had two this year. We had used, for one, we were supposed to, we should have used the VAM data because they did have, and the guidelines state that if there is enough students, 10 or more students, that we use the data that we gather from the state, the VAM score. We use that VAM rating. So we did have to make that change. Another one, I believe we ended up using the district data that we had received opposed to the VAM data. So we do look at that, research and accountability researches it. Again, they contact us and we do make those changes as needed. The next slide is a copy of our instructional evaluation process. And we have put a lot of the processes in place in writing just to make sure it's very clear and concise, because we know there's been a lot of questions regarding the evaluation system. So we want it to be as clear and concise for our administration and our instructional personnel as well. So basically going through, in July, we received the VAM data, in August and September, research and accountability sends out that VAM's rating to the schools and we have a very clear process for that. They send it out to the schools. Basically now, we have our administration, starting this year, send us a list of the instructional personnel and then how they're being evaluated, their data source. So then I will send those, or our department will send those to research and accountability. Research and accountability will say, okay, this was their data source, this is the rating they received. And then we will send that, human resources will send that back out to the schools. So then they will receive their rating and then their overall rating. During that same time, September, October, they're developing their professional development plans for the next year, deciding whether or not they're going to complete the deliberate practice plan. Walkthroughs are happening, observations are happening. In December, January, we, the principal meets with the teacher and does a mid-year review. And at that time, sometimes they've already done the observation and then they just review their observation and then the mid-year, do the, complete the mid-year review. There's a lot, I can share with you, there's a lot more conversations happening in our school, because as Mr. Mon said, we're completing walkthroughs on a regular basis. We're completing, everyone receives an observation now where that wasn't happening in the past, a minimum of one. And the mid-year reviews are taking place and they are documenting those mid-year reviews and sending that information, that documentation to human resources. We continue through the year in May, or in March, I should say, and we have very specific dates that we give our administration in March, the evaluations are, or the observations are complete. 15 days before the end of the year for students, our evaluations are complete. And so that's our continual process.
But it's based on last year's data?
It is based on, if it is district data that we've used, because we start reading for those K through three, a lot of times they can finish our evaluations right then. If we need to wait on the VAM data until it comes in in July and August, then we wait to complete those evaluations at that time.
Okay, that probably needs to be a little aside though.
Okay, and I can do that.
But you're using the VAM data for the following May's evaluation?
No, and I can clarify that. Thank you.
And the reason why we have to close those, the evaluations out 15 days prior to the school year, that's in contract that we had to do this before then. Like I tell you, a lot of our teachers would like for us to get it closer to the end of the school year because they want that highness, social growth, but because it's in contract, we have to go 15 days prior.
And who receives this stuff? Can I walk in and say, like, all of the seventh grade data on Mr. Kennedy's class and receive it? As a board member, I believe I could do that, but what, could anyone go walk in and ask?
The instructions, the evaluations, we have to hold for a year in human resources so they do not become public record for that next year. We hold them. So let's say 11, 12 school year, the 12, 13 school year, so they finish it in May of 2012, those evaluations, the 12, 13 school year, we hold those evaluations. They do not become public record until the following year and then they become public record. The observation and the summatives evaluations are part of their file.
Is a year delay then?
Yes, yes, that is correct. Okay, looking ahead, as I said, and again, I appreciate you letting me share early, we are having an evaluation meeting. We have them twice a year, at least twice a year. We meet in around this time of the year and then we meet again in May, so we will be meeting. We will review, we did send out an evaluation survey. We wanted some feedback from administrators and instructional personnel. What's going well with the evaluation system? What questions do you still have? And we are going to develop a frequently asked questions section on our website to address a lot of those questions. And then how do you interpret the rating of highly effective? Because as Mr. Kennedy said, there's, I know there's some questions out there. And so we are going to really focus and look at that this afternoon. And are there any changes that we need to make to our evaluation system to make it more effective for our teachers?
Or would highly effective and effective, is there a lot of round and tweet or are they close together or are they like, you know, the old fashioned A B?
And it's, there's really not, it is, you know, with that district portion, the wording is constitutes a model of proficiency. So we're looking at those teachers that are constituting a model of proficiency in their classroom for other teachers and making a difference. It's always been to, are they making a difference for students outside their classroom? Are they, are they helping and assisting with that student achievement for students outside the classroom? And that's really the definition for highly effective.
So going beyond the?
It's going beyond, yes. It's going beyond, yes.
The committee, who's on the committee?
Okay, that great question. We have union representatives, we have administrators, and we have teachers on that committee. And then continuing on this year and throughout the summer, research and accountability will oversee the development and implementation for, of test for those hard to measure areas. And I'm sure Mr. Simon and research and accountability will be sharing more about that as well as human resources as, as we proceed further. The other piece I wanted to mention that I don't have on here is that the state is requiring us to develop an evaluation system for district administrators. I believe it has to be completed sometime in March. Am I correct, Lindy? And we will be working on that. We don't have a whole lot of information on that. But Mr. Bishop will be attending a training in November and we will receive more information and we will present that to you when that is completed.
Are there models that are going to be developed and applied to everybody who works for the system and the value?
I can see that coming because we, you know, we, we implemented the student services evaluation system last year. So I can see that because I know there's been some question about TOSs. There's been questions about media specialists and those special areas. So I, I, I think those are, those are coming, ESE specialist. I think that's coming, that we will eventually.
And beyond that, does a person who works in the cafeteria or?
Right. I have not heard anything about support. We will continue to use our same evaluation, summative evaluation for our support personnel. Right now, I haven't heard anything about that yet. Have you, Lindy, anything regarding support? But if that comes, I will, I'll share that with you. All right. I hope this information was helpful, useful. If you have any questions throughout the year, any concerns, let me know. And I will address them, bring them back, or bring them to the evaluation team as well.
Can you just clarify for me? In the opening slide, you mentioned that the state statutes requiring that we as the district define three milestone career events. And we focused with the dialogue basically on a teacher moving up to an administrative role or, or moving up into administration. What were the other two that the district determined would be labeled as milestone events?
We, we only have one.
At this point, there's only one?
They didn't ask for three.
No, they only asked for one.
They just said you identify a milestone career event. I think what the swing was referring to is there were three things we need to do. Identify a milestone career event, create an additional metric, and then rate that additional metric.
And that would be deliberate practice.
Okay, so they, they, the state mandated that we focus on this specific evaluation process, moving teachers.
Having an additional metric that demonstrates effectiveness.
Yes.
Administrator that's working in the schools and an additional metric to demonstrate the effectiveness of a teacher that is working in the classroom.
So clarifying the choice that we, we have as a district, the, the choice was really, I'm still trying to figure out what the choice was. The state requires that we create, where, where the district, where the site, where did the counties control?
We determined that for the milestone career event, that it would be anyone moving from an instructional to administrative position. We determined that and we determined that our additional metric used would be the deliberate practice plan.
We really had the control at this level.
That is correct, to do that. That is correct.
It's requiring that we make that focus on those moving into administrative.
We deter, well, we determined that that would be the, the additional metric and the milestone career event would be anyone moving. We determined that. We decided that is the evaluation team, that anyone moving from an instructional to administrative position, that that was a significant change.
And here's the gray area that I really am searching for clarification. What is state required and what flexibility do we have and where do we fit as a board when it comes to the domino effect of transitions with state statutes? So thanks for the clarification. Thanks for the time and I hope you have enough time to have lunch.
Oh, I will. Thank you.
But I have a follow-up on that too because that was part of what I was thinking. I mean, that, that's the one that's dead by now. But if Mr. Kennedy won the Nobel Peace Prize and he was teaching the classroom, that would be a milestone event too. So you'd have the one moving teacher to administrator, but there will be more coming. Am I correct or is that?
No, that's, that's our milestone career event that we've chosen.
It wouldn't count.
And that would not count? Why would that not count?
We had to identify.
That was one, but.
We didn't have to identify multiple.
No, just one.
What we determined was a, was a milestone career event.
But wouldn't some, wouldn't someone identify more than that?
A major accomplishment.
Yeah, major accomplishment.
We went.
If you want state teacher lead?
State statute, those, SB 736, the, the piggyback on that was districts have to identify one.
That, just, we had to identify a milestone career event.
One milestone.
I will, I might, I'm going to say one. We as a committee felt like there could be multiple things. But we identified the milestone career event as being just one item. Yes, there were other things that we submitted even as additional metric items, but the state did not accept them because they had to demonstrate effectiveness in the classroom. Or effectiveness in student achievement, of having impact.
Thanks for that.
So that was the difference. We talked about lots of differences.
We did.
That being possibility of that being an additional metric because they've gone out and we submitted, okay, someone who seeks an additional degree. That's doing, working on their master's degree. That's something additional that could be having an impact on their, their classroom. That wasn't, wasn't accepted. So the milestone career event for us to identify was that. Some districts just applied an additional metric to everyone and said, we're just going to apply additional metric to everyone. This is what we're going to do and everyone's going to do that. We as a district went ahead and said, no, we'll just say this is the milestone career event and this is what the additional metric will be done to demonstrate effectiveness.
Thanks for that.
And Lindy, it, and I think this is where part of it is, DOE though made, made the determination of kicking them back. Where we suggested those not, it's not the legis, the legislator just came up with the other and then DOE is the one that then.
We wanted to have a multiple list. We wanted to have, we submitted a list of eight things that could be an additional metric that we would use and we would choose which one was appropriate. That was not acceptable. I will say there was a very strong force encouraging us to go with deliberate practice.
Thank you.
And that would be the easiest one to identify. I know we could argue if someone goes from here to there. It's very clear. But with the Nobel Peace Prize, I mean, maybe someone would feel that that was argumentative. Not to me, but I think maybe that portion we need to work a little bit on because there maybe should be additional things added, at least one more with us, that's kind of super achievement that a person might.
We use, we use.
The doctrine is.
We tried that as well and that was not, that was declined. But we were following the language of Race to the Top as they defined additional metrics. So that was kind of what.
Clear cut. It's clear cut. If you go from here.
It kind of zeroed it, helped us to zero in on what we would identify.
To give you this thing of subjectivity. Okay, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Suzy. Appreciate it.
No, and, and Suzy, you can go with this one. But it, it frustrates again that we, you know, we're hearing a lot of rhetoric about local control and we want to give districts, you know, autonomy and we want to, you know, and they don't. And this is to me an example of in legislate, in legislation, it will imply they're giving us local control. But here we go. We submit eight and basically they reject seven, I think is, is basically how it works.
Pollin meaning many, ticks meaning blood sucking creatures, okay? Pollin ticks. All right, we need to adjourn and go to lunch. Is it recess? We need to recess.
Do we want to just hear from Ms. Allegra and Florence?
Oh, perhaps we should.
That's your call. I'm thinking maybe 15, 20 minutes if you're hungry. Whatever your call is.
What would you like?
Do you have to stay for the next section?
Yes, sir.
Well, then whatever you, I was hoping to let her.
Let's go to lunch. All righty. We'll come back at, let's see, 12:30, 1:40 is what time we'll come back.